Hey guys, welcome back to another video. If you are new, I am Karen. Excuse how I'm looking right now y'all. Let's just look. Like excuse how I'm looking, I just got the shower and you know, my hair is a little messy right now. So excuse how I'm looking, but it's okay, I'm about to get to my hair in a minute. Like it's my hair in a minute because I'm getting ready right now for the day. Um, today I'm probably gonna do a good, not get ready with me. Today I'm gonna do a um, just a day in my life because y'all lately I've had a lot of stuff to do today, like in my days. So I just want to take y'all with me and show y'all how a day in my life is like. But y'all sometimes a day in my life is boring, sometimes a day in my life is like very like productive. Today is getting productive because right now I'm getting ready to go to the gym. And then after the gym, I'm coming back home, taking a shower, then I'm going to tutoring. And then, no, no, well, okay, so after I leave the gym, I'm gonna come at home, but I gotta get my car washed y'all. Because let me explain to y'all what happened yesterday y'all. Why? Okay, so I went to the gym yesterday, had a great workout y'all. I mean, I had a phenomenal workout. And it was crazy because I was so tired, like on my way driving to the gym, I was so tired, so drained. But I had the best workout ever, like I had a good sweat, I was actually sweating, like I had a great workout y'all. Like it was so good, I was just so happy. Anyways, so I'm walking outside the gym, you know, to get to my car and you know, drive home. As I'm walking, my car is here and I'm turning, you know, to open the door. And it's like scrapes, but then I'm like, wait, 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 I think it's a silly string. So I touch it away and showing it, it was silly string y'all. Somebody silly string my car, somebody silly string like the side of my car. I don't know if it was just because it was silly string, something else, and it kind of just got on my car. But y'all, somebody silly string my car. And now I'm confused because it's like, is somebody else get me or what? Like I'm confused, like I'm confused because I haven't done anybody, I haven't done anybody bad. Like I ain't, y'all, I ain't did, I don't even know people here in the state. Like I don't even know people in the state for real, like I know about, I can count on my fingers how many people I know in the state. It's probably like three, three y'all, probably three. But literally I was like, my car was silly stringed. And I have no reason, I have no reason why, like I, I, I don't know. So I wanted to watch it yesterday, last night, but I had to rush home because my boyfriend was coming over, so yeah. I didn't watch it last night. So I won't watch it today and my car needs a good wash, like over anything else. If this, this is, the city was gone telling me I need to wash my car because y'all, I have washed my car now, I don't know how long y'all. And it said I'm dirty, like my inside's not dirty, whatever, it's just like, well, the inside's dirty, but it's not like heck of dirty, like not clean, whatever. Like it's still clean, like people get my car, they don't say it's dirty, none of that. Anyways, it's just been like washing my car like y'all. I just, I just, it's so hot, like it's so hot in Florida right now. It's like, bro, standing in that sun, bro, I get so sweaty and hot. I want somebody else to do it. I want somebody else to wash the car. I don't want to wash the car. I can pay you to wash the car, but me washing the cars. So I'm deciding if I'm just gonna try and find a place, it's a place by my house that does it. I think I seen them like actually cleaning it. But it's so many places here, like where I live at, that just like you run your car wash through the um, car wash thing. And then you get the free vacuums and you have to wipe it off vacuum, like that's cool and all, like that's cool and all, but it's getting a little hot outside. And like, it's like about, I think it's about like nine right now and I'm about to go to the gym. So typically like four, five minutes to get to the gym y'all. And then I had back days, so it only probably took me an hour in the gym today. So by the time I get out of the gym, probably gonna be like 11. So I probably could do it because the sun's not gonna be up and still gonna be like a nice cool breeze. But I don't even know because you, like I never know what's going, because sometimes that's gonna be up a little early. So I'll be up a little early and I'll be like, oh no, I'm going to the house, ice cold water, AC. But yeah, and then I have to go to, I have to get a wax because it's been a month, so I have to re-wax myself. But well, I'm not waxing myself, but you know, I have to go back to the waxer. But like, I'm confused because like, I know they say like a month, supposed to get one every month, but y'all, it's barely any hair down there, like what you gonna pull, like what you gonna pull? I mean, I guess it's a good amount, but like it, it, it really, it really could go another week. That's, if it was me, it really could go another week. But I'm not gonna mess with that, I'm gonna keep doing it every four months. I mean, every four weeks because that's what they say, you know, I'm keeping the schedule, so yeah. Oh, and I want to get my eyebrows straightened. It's a girl. Oh y'all, and I need to unpack some stuff because I still got boxes. It's only a few boxes, but I need to unpack and get everything sorted away. So yeah, y'all, it's gonna be like a productive day. Oh, and I need to edit. It's gonna be a productive day y'all, so like hang on tight baby because we going on a ride. But right now y'all, I'm about to just brush my teeth y'all right now. Let me get the, let me get the floss. Am I out of my, oh no, no. Let me get my floss, this trash floss. You ever get this trash tail floss? This, this trash tail floss, I don't like this floss y'all, like it's terrible. Smartly floss? No, it's a no. Reach floss. I'm gonna put the picture right here. Reach floss is what you want, it's tough, bro. This is to um, smartly floss, I'm gonna put it right here. This is, it's, it's too, it's just too like it's, what's the word for it? It's not tough like reach, basically, that's all I gotta even know. So reach. Get the reach floss. But I mean, it's still gonna do whatever you do, it still floss my teeth, so I ain't mad, still doing its job, but I just prefer reach, that's all, so. Little spray. That's it for the get ready department. Now back to my room. Y'all, this is what I'm talking about, see I have boxes, like these are the boxes, I'm talking about undo those. I have to undo those, I have to undo those, my bed. And then like I have to like go through stuff like this, I have all these bags of clothes right here. Can y'all see? Yeah, three bags of clothes right here, this is bags, this is clothes, and some more clothes under that. I got a lot to do, go through, whatever, but that's life, that's life for you baby. I like this way better because the sunlight, the sunlight's coming through. Alright, so now I'm about to just, this is a weird angle. Okay, so now I'm about to go change to my gym clothes and I'll be right back. Okay guys, so I am back in my gym clothes, this is the fit for today. I just got pink bottoms and I have this open back top for my back because it's back day. And yeah, guys, I really like how I look right now y'all, I'm not gonna care, but I like how I look right now. Like I look, I look official, official like I look official. But y'all, so now I'm gonna like rearrange my room because, not rearrange my room, but like fix my bed. Because it's kind of, it's like kind of made, but like it could be made a little bit better. So yeah, I'm about to make up my bed. Hopefully y'all can see me right here, y'all, y'all can see me. I'm just gonna make it up a little bit better. Y'all, because I, I'm a perfectionist. I'm not a perfectionist, but like my boyfriend always comes to me a perfectionist. So like my bed is made, I could leave it like that, but I just want it to be a little bit more crisp. So I guess in a way I'm a perfectionist right now, so yeah. Okay, so now my bed looks a lot better, like that's how it looks. Yeah, I like the way it looks like that. Y'all, I'm actually gonna be um, getting a new bed. Well, like, I don't know, I haven't made the decision, but I think I'm gonna get me a new bed because I think I'm gonna give me a new bed because like, my bed y'all is just so big. Like not my bed, I mean my bed frame, like the frame of my bed is just so big y'all and um, like my other house, we managed to get it in there, whatever, but it just made my room looks like so much smaller. And now I have a bigger room, like I have a walk-in closet, I have my own bathroom in my room. It's like much bigger and it's still like looking like I don't have a lot of space because of the bed. And I'm lowkey sad because like I really love my bed, like I love this bed, like it makes me feel like I'm a princess or a queen. Like I love this bed, but it's just that like it's too big and if I can't have like a master bedroom, which I don't have, because my parents have a master bedroom as they should, it's just not gonna work. And like I lowkey wanna keep this bed in storage and have when I get my own place. But like, that's not realistic because then I have to pay you on storage for no reason, like so I think I'm just gonna have to get a new bed frame. But like, I do like this bed though, but it's just, it's just not practical, like I mean, I'm making it work, like I don't know, y'all, I don't, I don't know, like I don't like it. But like, it's just too big, it's too big, it's too big, it's just too big, like. And my momma told me, my momma told me that before I got it, she's like, Karen, it's just too big. I'm like, mama, I'm gonna make it work. And now look at me, it's literally too big, so. Yeah, I'm in the process of looking for a new bed frame, whatever. I still want like this fabric though, but like, I don't know y'all, I gotta figure out. So yeah, like getting a new bed frame and then like this drawer right here. Um, I don't know if I get a new drawer or like, I'm going one by one. So I'm gonna find a new bed frame and then I'm gonna see like how the drawers looking. Because I wanted to like, if I can salvage the drawer, I'm gonna spray paint it black and then change like the hardware on it or whatever. But it just all depends on like whatever, whatever. My dad said I can get um, a dresser, a new dresser and a new bed frame. But like, I don't know, I'm trying to like see what's more like better to do, so yeah. That's what I'm doing and I have to just like, right now, like right, I, I, it's a lot, like now I'm talking, like it's always a lot. Like there's always like something that can be done. But yeah, I'm gonna have to unpack this stuff and figure out like, first I need to unpack my stuff and see like where all my stuff needs to go. And then even figure out if I need a drawer, because I have drawers in my closet, like I can give y'all a short little, let me show y'all my closet. I'm gonna do a room tour y'all, but I just wanna get my room together when I show y'all. But like, this is my closet, like so far this is my closet, like they have, it has drawers, it's like an Ikea little thing. It has drawers and then it has the little, oh shoot, then it has like little hooks or whatever, not hooks, but like where I can hang things up at. And then I have these shelves and more drawers, whatever. Um, so it's very spacious, like it's literally a walk-in closet. It's very spacious and I'm very excited for my closet because it's a walk-in, like I love a walk-in closet. Um, but I just gotta figure out where I'm gonna put things at and where they're gonna go and what I need. Like if I need a drawer, if I, like if I need storage, but like what I wanna do, because I have storage on my bed. Like I can lift these up and I can like put stuff in it, so I really like that touch. So I like, I wanna keep that in my bed, like I wanna um, get a bed, like maybe that doesn't have them out like this. But maybe one that's like, I can pull out, like pull out them, 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 pull out this. Hopefully y'all know what I'm talking about, like they have pull-out drawers and then you push them back. So that's kind of what I wanna do, but y'all, who knows? Who knows? Because it's not a lot going on, but um, let me put my crocs on. But first of all, let me put some socks on because I need some socks. Y'all, I wear mismatch socks, like I'm an adult that wears mismatch socks, like people feel like hating sometimes on mismatch socks. I'm like, when mismatch socks was a trend, I was never going back. Like when mismatched socks became a thing, I was never going back. I don't know about y'all. But I was never going back to regular old matching socks. And then let me just get some um, crocs. Well, that's where my red ones, wherever they're at. Oh, they're over here, because over here. And now I need my watch. I need my watch. Acoustic. Ooh, excuse me y'all. I don't know what the button is. Alright guys, I'm gym ready, my gym bags in the car, my sneakers in the, ooh, my gym shoes are in the car and I'm ready. I'm probably gonna stop and get some breakfast, some Chick-fil-A. Y'all, I'm un, I'm, I'm un-um, balanced. Okay guys, so I just got my Chick-fil-A. So now I'm about to crunch crunch and then go to the gym gym, because I have a long drive for me. So I'm gonna show y'all, well, I'm gonna let y'all know when I get there. So I'm about to enjoy my meal and bye guys, I'll see y'all in a little bit at the gym. Okay guys, oop, let me try this. Okay guys, so I just got to gym. I had a great workout, it was a quick workout though, back days are always quick for me because y'all, my back y'all, literally when I started working on my back, it didn't take no time for my back to get built. Like I have a very big back, you're gonna see in the videos that like I posted before this clip. But y'all, I have a very, I feel like my back is very muscular already, so I don't need that many back workouts because it's already muscular. But I mean, it's good that it's built up, it's just that like, it's good, I feel like it looks good with my body. But I just need to focus more on my lower body too, because my lower body like, y'all, it looks big. Like in those videos, it probably looks like really, really big, but like it's just because I'm working it out. It don't look like that in like, when I'm like, just like chilling, you know what I'm saying? And when I'm chilling, it ain't that big. But like, it's good that it's big because when my butt gets a little bit bigger and you know, things start to grow, you know, down um, in my lower body, it's all gonna come together, but y'all, I love my back days. I love a good back day, because when I have a good back day, I be looking real good. Like y'all, I was looking real good, like my, I be having a nice, like, I don't know, like, I don't know if I can see in the clips. But like, if you pay attention to my waist, like my waist literally looks snatched. Like when I'm doing my um, my um, back like day workouts, my waist looks snatched, literally looks snatched. Like my, I have a small waist. And the reason is just an illusion, because when your back is bigger, your waist looks smaller. And like, my butt is kind of big, kind of big, it's bigger than what it was or whatever. So it makes it look even smaller, like when you have like a coke body shape, when your back's bigger and your butt is bigger, it's gonna make that waist look tiny. But see, people just be wanting to like, some people just be wanting to grow their butt and forget about, ooh, sorry y'all, I ain't shaving my armpits, but that's okay. It's not that much. But um, some people just wanna grow their lower body and then forget about, you know, your upper body. But like you have to, you have to like train that too, train all of that, but yeah, sure, I had a good workout and I was cute and I looked cute today, like I don't know why, it's about to stay, but I just looked really good today. I don't know, that sweat, that sweat glow, that sweat glow, that after gym glow hit different. But yeah guys, so it's about, it's 11:39, about to be 12, so I'm probably about to go wash my car. I don't know if I'll wash my car in this area or by my house area, probably by my house area, so I can just go ahead home, take a shower, eat. And then go to the tutoring center and do what I need to do. And then be back on my way over here, because I have a last appointment, get my eyebrows done. And yeah, so I'm probably just gonna go wash my car right now, so stay tuned in. Okay guys, so I'm at the car wash, this is a nice car wash, they do it like the um, they do it like auto room, they do it for you, like they wipe it down for you, they wash it for you, all of that. Hope my car does good. But yeah guys, it's a nice little shop, it's like they do like um, they do like the like oil changes and like, you know, tires and stuff like that too. And then they wash your car too, so it's like really cool. But yeah, I'll show y'all when it's done. Y'all, my car looks so clean y'all, they did it quick too, I'm, I'm on my phone, so I'm some, Karen? I'm like, oh, alrighty, my car is so clean y'all, look at the, I got all my stuff in the car, but like they backed it to the ground for me, they did the backs for me, my car looks so clean, let me show y'all the outside real quick. Y'all, but my car looks so clean, I'm so happy. She needed to be cleaned, but I needed to be cleaned too y'all, like she was very, 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 very dirty. Well, not like, okay, not like that dirty, but like she needed to be cleaned, like, because I haven't got her car washed, I don't know how long, so she, she deserved it. And yeah, they did good, they did really, really good. I will be going back, it was worth the money, it was worth the money, let's believe that. So guys, now I'm going to tutoring y'all, because the car wash was right by my tutoring place, so I had no choice but to go to it. But y'all, why did I check my like student, my um, my, my student, my Canvas, my Canvas app? Like for college, whatever. And I'm thinking, I don't have no time to miss. Y'all, I got four things I need to do and then how about I missed my Zoom this morning? But luckily she records the Zooming, so it's okay, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. But that's what I'm about to do, but I'm going to tutoring right now, hopefully like everything's good. But I'm gonna get it done, I'm gonna get it, I'm Karen, I always get it done, like y'all, I be on the move tip, you know what I'm saying? So I gotta get it done. But yeah, so y'all probably gonna see me like up there studying, whatever, doing, doing, doing some work, so. Okay guys, so I just left tutoring, y'all, it's so hot outside, bro. But I just left tutoring, I got, I'm kinda in a rush, it's 2:20, I still gotta go home, take a shower, y'all. I ate some shits, but I still haven't had a real lunch meal, so like I just gotta, I gotta go, 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 because my appointment for my wax is at 4:30 and I still have to shower. Because I took a shower this morning, but I went to the gym, so I have to re-shower, to get the sweat off my body and what was I gonna say? Oh, and it takes me like a long time to get to the wax place y'all, because I live in the country. I live in the country, I didn't ask to live in the country, but I live in the country, thanks to mom and dad. But yeah guys, so it's gonna be a little rushed, rushed right now, but we good. See y'all when I get home. Okay guys, so I'm back home, I just got home, so now I'm gonna hop in the shower, take a quick little shower. And then I'm gonna try to get some food before and drive to my appointment, hopefully. Hopefully I'll have time to get food before, but if I don't, then I get food after. Y'all, I don't have nothing here to eat, I have nothing in my refrigerator to eat sadly. Okay guys, so I just got a shower, just got dressed. This is how I look, let me see if y'all can see me. Let me fix this, okay. This is how I look, oh Jesus Christ, why does it look like this? There we go. This is how I look, just got some shorts on, this tee on, whatever, whatever, nothing too crazy. See, I haven't worn shorts in a minute though y'all, like literally, I'm either going to work or I just don't care about how I look or I'm going to the gym. Oh no, I wear those type of shorts, like to the gym, I wear shorts, because y'all just seen me in shorts earlier today. But I mean like jean shorts, I haven't wore jean shorts, I don't know how long, it's been a half minute. But guys, now I'm finna go, okay, so I, so it's like, what time is it? It's 3:16 right now, calculated how long it would take, I put it in before I started recording and it said I should get there right at 4:01. So unfortunately I don't have time to eat, so I'm gonna have to drive 40 minutes and then I guess get something, get something after, because I wanna be early, like I don't wanna be late or whatever, because you know, I don't, I don't like playing with other people's time. Because I don't like my time played with. So yeah, I'm gonna go, I'm, I'm gonna be on my way to going to the European Wax Center. And yeah, I'll see y'all there. Okay guys, so I just arrived at the European Wax Center, so I'm about to go and get waxed, I'm a little early. But hopefully she can go ahead and get me in and I can get on out and then go get some food, y'all, go get some food. Y'all already know I can't record in there, so I'll just see y'all when I'm done. Okay guys, so I just got done getting waxed, process was amazing, my girl always do me good, like I always go ask for her. So now I'm hungry y'all, now I need to figure out what I'm gonna eat. Honestly, like, y'all, I honestly don't know what I'm gonna eat today. Like literally, I do not know what I'm gonna eat, like I'm trying to think about it. I lowkey want some pizza, not gonna care, I want some pizza. But like I work at a pizza place, so like, do I really want pizza? Do I really want pizza? But yeah, I do, y'all, I do want pizza though, no cap. But I don't wanna go to my job for pizza, because I'm about to be in there like already like this week. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to spend more time at work than I have to. I don't know, I probably want some Domino's or something, but I need to get my eyebrows done. Need to get my eyebrows done. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking about what I'm about to do. Woo guys, I just got out getting my eyebrows done, y'all, look at these. Y'all, bro, let me tell you something, I'm gonna tell you something, let me turn this AC, huh, first of all, let me turn this AC up because it's getting a little hot. Let me tell y'all something, bro. Literally like you getting your eyebrows done will change the whole way on how you look, bro, like bro, when I get my eyebrows done, I be feeling like a baddie, just off the eyebrows, no makeup, no lashes, no hair done, none of that. Bro, just get your eyebrows done, bro, just, oh my, they, they just do so much for your appearance, like get your eyebrows done, get them threaded. I'm telling y'all, threading is the way to go, it is a little bit more painful than waxing, but threading your eyebrows is the way to go. It's perfect every time, like I go to my little shop, whatever, it's like nine people there, nine, 10 girls that do that, I mean, not lashes. Nine, 10 girls that do the eyebrows and y'all, they all do good, I'm not even gonna cap. They all do good, because like, when you getting your eyebrows threaded, it's individual, they're pulling out like individual hairs, like sometimes they can group them together, but they're doing it individually. Waxing, if you, if you mess up that, waxing, you pull that thing off, y'all, y'all whole eyebrow is gone. But with threading, you literally pulling individual hairs and it's more precise, y'all. I just love threading, like as much as it give me, as much as I'd be like, like you know, it'd be hard whether my eyebrow is worth it, because my eyebrows look good every time, like look at this, every time my eyebrows look good, y'all, like my eyebrows look so good, like, ooh, I just look so much better, y'all, I look so much better, like I'm sorry, like just look at my face, like you even look at the clip before this clip and just see like how like my eyebrows a little bushy. Oh, they're not bushy no more, baby, they shaped, they're shaped and they're perfect, like period, like get your eyebrows threaded, stop being a baby, put your big girl panties on, or big girl, or big boy drawers on and go get them eyebrows done. Get them threaded, baby, and I promise you, you will never go back. Yes, it's a little painful, but I promise you, after you see that product and it lasts a long time. Y'all, literally, I literally don't have to get my eyebrows done for a month. I think in the last clip, I haven't, I haven't got my eyebrows done like maybe two months, because she was on vacation for a month. So I think I ain't getting my eyebrows done in like two months. I mean, I did get them done, I don't know, but it's been a, it's been a hot minute. Literally, I can go like a month, a month while I get my eyebrows done, before they go like that. That's a little bit over a month, that's probably like a month and some change, but y'all literally, get your eyebrows done, you will not be disappointed by the, like the um, outcome you have. Go get your eyebrows done, like go get them done now, bro. Get it done now, bro, because this is the best, I'm telling you, bro, eyebrow threading is the best, I'm telling you, but I know like y'all, just look at them, like just look at them, just look at them, bro, just look at them, my eyebrows look too good. I'm too high, y'all, I'm, ah, I'm too high, like my eyebrows look good, eyelid good, sun hair real nice, like y'all, like just get your eyebrows threaded, like, I mean, I'm not gonna cap, like the pain for eyebrow threading is like it's like a, I'd say it's like a seven. I don't have the, I don't think I have the highest like pain tolerance, like or the lowest pain tolerance, no, the highest. I don't even know, but I, 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 I hear, I feel pain, I feel pain, like pain hurts me, I don't have like, oh, I don't feel, it's not like I don't feel anything, no. Pain hurts me, so whatever that's called, then yeah. So I'd say it's a solid seven, but I mean, it's for, it's different for everybody. Like my mom, she been getting her eyebrows done for the, for a long time, she still saying, it's, it just feels same, like it just feels the same, like literally like, whenever, like it's not like waxing, like waxing, it kinda get better, like when I, because I just got waxed, so I'll say waxing is better, it's better because like um, okay, get your eyebrows done, I'm not talking about eyebrow waxing, I'm talking about my, my down there waxing, my coochie waxing, y'all. My coochie wax. So like getting my coochie wax is like, it kinda get easier, it kinda get a little easier, like it's faster, it was faster and like didn't feel as like bad, but like threading, eyebrow threading, it's gonna be the same type of pain every time, like don't matter if you been getting it done for a year, 10 years, it's gonna Don't matter if you been getting it done for a year, ten years, it's gonna feel the same type of way. And that, and that's just threading, but like, bro, the outcome is so beautiful, like, it's so beautiful, and then my eyebrows are already thick. So they just look even more perfect, like when I was a little girl, not a little girl, but when I was younger and I wasn't getting my eyebrows threaded or getting them done at all. A lot, a lot of the people wanted me to get my eyebrows done cuz they just so thick and pretty already, so just imagine what a little shaping would do. But I waited until, I think I didn't get my eyebrows done till I was, I think I didn't get my eyebrows done till I was like sixteen or seventeen. And y'all, I just get them threaded, like honestly, I've been getting my eyebrows threaded for the longest, I think I started to get them waxed, but then like. Wax didn't last for my eyebrows, like I could get my eyebrows waxed and then, and then my um. Then my eyebrows grow back in like fully, like the next week and no, I'm not about to spend money every week getting my eyebrows done. I get threading, my eyebrows don't grow once for a month, like, what you just seen me in the last clip? Like when my eyebrows not done, that's probably, that's like I said, that's probably like a month and some change. But literally, I don't have to go for a month, my eyebrows would still look cute, literally, still look cute, it might be like a few hairs, of course, but. Boy, I brushed my face, they still got, they, they still got the neatness, like, it's the guy's neatness, so. I'm just letting y'all know, get your eyebrows done, you will not be disappointed, but to each his own, I understand if you don't, I understand if you don't want to, it is painful, you know, so. But beauty is pain, so if you either, you either gonna be pretty or I'm just, I was playing, but like you could choose your pain, but. Like beauty's gonna be pain, so I'll say get your eyebrows threaded because at the end of the day, it's, it's better because you don't have to get them done like every, every week. Like you literally can get them done every month, for me, I literally can get them done every month. Cuz that's usually what happens, I usually just get them done every month cuz I, cuz I, like I'll get my eyebrows done then forget. And then like when they start looking bad, oh, I go back, it's been like a month, so. Yeah, or if I have like really important things to do, then I might get them done like maybe three weeks or two weeks then, just, just because, but. It depends on how they looking, maybe three weeks, three weeks probably, but. Yeah, guys, get your eyebrows threaded because this right here, baby, this is cute. So now, guys, I'm probably gonna get some food and go home. But to be honest, this is the end of the vlog, I hate to end it, but y'all, this gonna be a long vlog. Cuz I feel like I did so much today, I'm not gonna cap, I feel like I did a lot today, I'm not even gonna cap, like. I feel like I did a lot, it's gonna be a long vlog. But I might cut a lot of stuff out, but I don't know, but it's, right now it's a long vlog, so. Thank you, guys, for watching my video, please remember to like, comment and subscribe to my channel, I really appreciate y'all subscribing for my. I really appreciate y'all, I really appreciate y'all subscribing to my channel and you know, like and commenting like down below in my thing, I just, I just feel really connected to y'all, so. Please keep that up and I really appreciate all y'all and thank you for watching this video and I'm out, bye.